I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting one another is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the Chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the Chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola.
Present.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Botcher.
Present.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Present.
De La Rosa. Dinowitz.
Here.
Felice.
Here.
Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Marmarado.
Present.
Marte.
Present.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya. Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse. Osay.
Present.
Palladino.
Present.
Powers. Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Shulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Vernikoff.
Here.
Williams.
I'm here.
Juan. Krishnan.
Here.
Jaeger.
Here.
Zhuang.
Here.
Borelli. Farias.
Present.
... which will be delivered by Reverend Luisa Celeste Martinez, 104th Street, Manhattan.
Let us pray. Almighty God, from whom all heart and mind are open on this day, purify our earth so that together we could work worthily and harmoniously for the resolution of many projects for the betterment and development of this great city that all the son and daughter of you represent. Allow, allow us, Lord, that in this month, that as we celebrate women's history, all united, we may raise the banner of conquer, unity, and development for this city where so many women of courage play a role of mother, daughter, wife, sister, working arm in arm for a more just, harmoniously, and prepared society. O Lord, bless each of the representative present here and the community they work for. O God, bless all who labor in this place. Help them, Lord, so that every day they can be better citizens willing to serve better for thy who have been elected for. Lord, we ask all this in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Dios todopoderoso, por quien todos los corazones y las mentes están abiertos en este día, purifica nuestros corazones para que juntos y juntas podamos trabajar digna y arduamente para la resolución de tantos proyectos para el mejor desenvolvimiento de esta gran ciudad que todos estos tus hijos e hijas representan. Permite, oh Señor, que en este mes que se celebre el mes de la mujer, todas unidas podamos levantar el estandarte de la concordia, la unidad, y el desarrollo de esta ciudad donde tantas mujeres de valor desempeñan un rol como madre, hijas, esposas, hermanas, trabajando hombro a hombro por una sociedad más justa, más preparada, y más armoniosa. Bendice, oh Señor, a cada uno de los representantes que aquí están presente y que representan sus comunidades. Bendice, oh Dios, a todos los que laboran en este lugar. Ayuda, Señor, a que cada día puedan ser mejores ciudadanos dispuestos a servir mejor para lo que han sido electos y electas. Señor, todo esto te lo pedimos in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you. Reverend Dr. Luisa Celeste Martinez was born in the Dominican Republic to a Methodist family, shaping her career, spiritual journey, and civic engagement. She graduated from University Enrique Ureña and the Universidad Central de Este in the Dominican Republic. She then received a Master's in Theology from the New York Theological Seminary. She has been a pastor at the Church of All Nations, the first Spanish United Methodist Church, and St. Stevens since the late 90s, and started as an Elder in Grace United Methodist Church in 2002. She resides in Harlem and is a proud mother of two children. After retiring, she returned to service at Grace Methodist Church and United Methodist Church of Co-op City in the past year, and has continued volunteering in communities across Upper Manhattan and the Bronx. La reverenda Doctora Luisa Celeste Martinez nació en la República Dominicana en una familia metodista y dio forma a su carrera, viaje espiritual, y compromiso cívico. Se graduó de la Universidad Enrique Ureña de la universidad y de la Universidad Central de Este en República Dominicana. Luego recibió una maestría en teológica del Seminario Teológico de Nueva York. Ha sido pastora de la Iglesia de Todos, Todas las Naciones, la primera Iglesia Metodista Unida y de San Esteban desde finales de los años 90. Y comenzó en la Iglesia Metodista Unida Grace en 2002. Reside in Harlem y es una orgullosa madre de dos hijos. Después de jubilarse, regresó al servicio en la Iglesia Metodista Grace y la Iglesia Metodista Unida de Co-op City el año pasado, y continuó trabajando como voluntaria en comunidades de todo el auto Manhattan y el Bronx. I would now like to make a motion to spread the invocation on the record. Okay, adoption of minutes?
None.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
Pre-considered M-29 and M-30 council budget.
Finance.
M-31 Controller Report.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
M-32 Tax Commission Report.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
Thank you. Positions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M-33.
Cubbed on call-up vote, I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's call. Land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brannon.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa. Dinowitz.
Aye.
Felice.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez. Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Thank you. Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marmarado.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Moya. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse. Osay.
Aye.
Thank you. Palladino. She's not here. Powers. Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Salam.
Aye.
Salamanca.
Aye.
Thank you. Sanchez.
Aye.
Shulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Here. Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Vernikoff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Juan. Jaeger.
Aye.
Zhuang.
Aye.
Brooks Powers.
Permission to vote on land use call-ups and all items on the general order calendar?
Permission granted.
I'd like to vote aye on all, and I'd also like to extend my congratulations and well wishes to the Vallone family in honor of the late Paul Vallone and...
Sorry. Majority whip, you are out of order with speaking on the record.
Yes. Vote aye on all, and again, thank you.
Thank you.
Gutierrez. Borelli. Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of 44 in affirmative and zero in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. Before we begin, I want to acknowledge the loss of a New Yorker who died during a fatal fire in Councilmember Sanchez's district in the Bronx. We also wish a speedy recovery for the firefighter who was injured while responding bravely to the fire. Our hearts are with their loved ones during this difficult time. March 6th is the Independence Day of Ghana, when we commemorate the country's independence from the United Kingdom in 1957. Ghanaian communities, I wish you a happy Independence Day. Tomorrow is International Women's Day. Yeah, we can clap for that. As a historic women majority, and the men who get it, New York City Council, we truly have prioritized policies and solutions to confront some of the greatest challenges facing women across our city. Women are the backbone of our communities, and when women are safe, healthy, and have access to opportunity, we all succeed. It will remain a pillar and focus of our work in this legislative body to prioritize equitable outcomes for all women in this city. Happy International Women's Day. This evening of... No, the evening of May 10th, and I do have my glasses on. The evening of May 10th marks the start of Ramadan for our Muslim communities. As our Muslim neighbors fast from sunrise to sundown, I want to extend my best wishes as you observe the blessed month. Ramadan mubarak. This year, National Equal Pay Day falls on March 12th, symbolizing just how much more women across our nation must work to earn what their male counterparts earned in the last year. In New York, for every dollar that a man makes, women earn an average of 77 cents. The disparity is even wider for women of color, with Asian women making 69 cents, Black women making 63 cents, and Latino women making 49 cents for every single dollar that a man makes. This makes no sense. Despite the progress we've made, obviously there is more work needed for us to close this gap. Women keep our city running but are still not paid equally for our equal labor. The council has focused on pay equity and addressing systemic issues within our own municipal workforce for years now. That work continues, and as we approach National Equal Pay Day, I look forward to our continued work together to finally achieve pay equity for all of us. On March 17th, we will be celebrating St. Patrick's Day. The council hosted a tremendous St. Patrick's Day celebration right here in the chambers last night, and many of us marched together in Sunnyside and Woodside last weekend for the 25th Annual St. Pat's For All Parade in Queens and Street Co-Naming Celebration. I look forward to once again marching down Fifth Avenue next week for the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. Before we continue, I'd love to tell everybody that it's time to get ready to spring forward and lose that hour. Wake up, wake up, wake up. Daylight savings time will begin on March 10th, so remember to take your nap on Saturday, colleagues, and set your clock ahead one hour this Sunday. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following finance items. The council's fiscal year 2025 proposed operating budget includes $75.5 million for the personal services and $24.3 million for OTPS or other than personal services. Next, we'll vote on the following land use items. 230 Kent Avenue rezoning will facilitate a new eight-story mixed-use residential, commercial, and community facility building in Councilmember Wrestler's district. It will feature 40 housing units, including approximately 12 affordable units and 20 bicycle parking spaces. The council is modifying the application to strike MIH Option 2 and remove the Con Edison Utility property from the rezoning area. Timbell Terrace, a UDAP approval and disposition of city-owned property to facilitate the development of a 19-story building in Councilmember Salam's district. It will include 330 affordable housing units, 97 units of supportive housing, and a ground-floor community facility theater for community programs, offering a permanent home to the Afro-Latin Jazz Music and Art Center. There will also be private outdoor recreation space for tenants, a green roof, a laundry room, a fitness center, and 75 parking spaces. And a new 547-seat primary school in Councilmember Dinowitz's district. The council will also vote on three landmark designations: the Joseph Rodman Drake Park and Enslaved Peoples' Burial Ground, a park in Councilmember Salamanca's district that contains two colonial-era cemeteries, the Hunt-Willett Leggett Cemetery for early settler families, and an enslaved people cemetery for those forced to labor for those families in the Hunts Point neighborhood of the Bronx. The Barkin-Levin and Company Office Pavilion, a minimalist structure in Councilmember Caban's district that was originally part of a factory that manufactured women's coats in the late 1950s. And the Modulariter Building, named for the architectural lighting company that architect Paul Rudolph founded with his business partner Ernst Wagner in 1976. The Modulariter Building in Councilmember Powers District is a unique and distinguished example of late 20th-century modern design. It contains commercial space, an expanded duplex apartment, and two floors used for exhibitions and events. Today, we'll also vote on the following resolutions. Resolution 202, sponsored by me, calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to increase the wages and improve the working conditions of home care aides. It is vital that we support these essential workers and advance their well-being, particularly amidst the growth of New York's home care workforce that provides care for patients throughout our state. It is important to note that the state controls labor regulations and Medicaid reimbursement rates that impact the wages and working conditions of home care aides. The State Department of Labor's regulation limits pay to 13 hours, even when long, grueling shifts can extend for as long as 24 hours. That's why we're passing this resolution today, to call on the governor and the state legislature to act on existing legislation and propose changes that can improve these conditions. We look forward to working with them to strengthen and support this vital workforce. We thank our staff members Elizabeth Arts and Nicholas Connell. We will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction 172, sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farias. Would amend Local Law 33 of 2024 to clarify that any driver of a four-hire vehicle with an approved tablet in their vehicle would receive a minimum of 20% of the gross revenue it generates? The bill would also set the fee for the interior advertising company license at $500. We thank our staff members Mark Chen, Kevin Katuski, John Basile, and Connor Mealy. Introduction 1B, sponsored by me. Would designate the Animal Care Centers of New York City Facility in Queens as the Paul A. Vallone Queens Animal Care Center, named for former Councilmember Paul Vallone, who was a colleague and dear friend of mine and many others in this body. Former Councilmember Vallone was a passionate advocate for animals and their care, and he advanced many bills to support being while he served here in the council. This includes his bill establishing Local Law 123 of 2018, which requires the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to ensure that full-service animal shelters are operated in all five burrows. Councilmember Vallone's legislation was the culmination of a multi-generational effort that started over two decades ago under his father, who we call Speaker Juan, Speaker Peter Vallone Sr., and it continued with his brother, former Councilmember Peter Vallone Jr. We thank our beloved Vallone family for their dedicated public service to our city and New Yorkers overall, and your longstanding commitment to the welfare of precious animals. This renaming is a fitting tribute, and I'm so proud that we can continue to honor Councilmember Vallone's memory and legacy in his, mine, and your home borough of Queens. We are also grateful to the entire Vallone family for sharing Paul with our entire city. I want to acknowledge that members of the Vallone family are right here in chambers with us today, including his wife Anna Marie and their beautiful children. Former member Peter Vallone Jr. was here earlier this morning for the vote, and we also appreciate all of our Centers of New York City and everyone who made this important legislation possible. We thank our staff members Sarah List, Christopher Pepe, Sarah Suter, and Manure Butt. Introduction 4A, sponsored by Councilmember Alexa Aviles, would require cruise ships with shore power capability to connect to shore power systems when docked whenever shore power is available and is safe and practicable to do so. This requirement would be enforced by the New York City Economic Development Corporation, or EDC, which administers the two cruise terminals in New York City. EDC would also be required to create and regularly update community traffic mitigation plans in the neighborhoods around each terminal in consultation with the Department of Transportation, the Police Department, and members of the public who reside in the neighborhoods surrounding cruise terminals. We thank our staff members Alex Pollenoff, David Seitzer, and William Hangak. Thank you for your attention, colleagues. Now, I would like to turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders. And I'd like to call on and recognize Councilmember Wrestler, followed by Aviles and Gennaro.
Great, thank you so much, Majority Leader. Just wanted to speak briefly about a ULP item we're voting on today at 230 Kent. 230 Kent is a... There's a lot of excitement around it. There's... It's a small development, it's only about 40 units. But it's a good project. The gentleman, who's a neighborhood person who grew up in South Williamsburg, who owns the site, put $6 million into remediation of this site before there was any promise of a rezoning or new development. That was a real contribution to cleaning up our community that I deeply value. And as a result, I'm very happy to support this rezoning, and I'm proud. The District 33 has generated more new units of housing than any other district in the city of New York over the last 15 years. And with this ULP, we will continue to lead in helping to address housing supply and this hazard crisis. So thank you so much, and hope my colleagues will consider supporting it.
I'd now like to call on Councilmember Aviles, followed by Gennaro.
Thank you so much. After a tremendous amount of work on behalf of the community of Red Hook, I'm proud to be voting today on a piece of legislation that will mean significant air quality gains for our communities in the decades to come. Today, we will vote to pass Intro 4, a bill that will require cruise ships coming to New York City to plug in to clean shore power system where it already exists in Brooklyn and where it will exist in Manhattan. It also requires that contracted entities come up with a traffic mitigation plan that will hopefully prevent the sort of nightmare from occurring that happened in Red Hook this summer, a direct result of the EDC and cruise operators having no plan at all. I want to thank the speaker for her support, Councilmember Botcher for being a steadfast ally and co-prime sponsor, Majority Leader Farias in her role as Chair of Economic Development, and of course, community members who have kept up the heat since the mayor signed this project without our involvement. I'd like to thank some of them by name in particular: Adam Armstrong, Carolina Salguero, Victoria Alexander, Susan Povich, Carley of the Red Hook Business Alliance, Mathias Cowell, Kiki Valentine, Daisy Conroy, and the rest of the PS-15 PTA, Jasmine and Doniel of Pacific Environment, the team at Red Hook Initiative, New York City Earth Justice Alliance, our Community Board Six, and so many others who fought for clean power, clean shore power. As the community will tell you, our fight is not over. We know already that improvements can be made in this bill, particularly with regards to enforcement. We know we will have a long road ahead of us, making others necessary. Cowell, Kiki Valentine, Daisy Conroy, and the rest of the PS-15 PTA, Jasmine and Doniel of Pacific Environment, the team at Red Hook Initiative, New York City Earth Justice Alliance, our Community Board Six, and so many others who fought for clean power, clean shore power. As the community will tell you, our fight is not over. We know already that improvements can be made in this bill, particularly with regards to enforcement. We know we will have a long road ahead of us making others necessary air quality gains for our communities, like regulating last mile industry, but we are organized, and I'm confident that we will continue to make progress together. I'd like to send a message that not only will we require this industry to decarbonize, but that we will not accept false solutions, clean air for all of New York City residents, and clean water. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Aviles. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Gennaro.
Thank you, Madam Leader. I don't ordinarily rise when I speak, but when I'm talking about the Vallones and the Vallone family, I think it's appropriate to do that. I want to add my voice to the chorus of the Speaker and those that spoke this morning at the Health Committee. I was hired by Speaker Vallone in the summer of 1990, and I got to know him very well, and he became like a second father to me. Many people from the era know that Peter Vallone, Sr. had a retreat group, and I've been, I don't ordinarily mix worlds, but I'm going to do it now, that myself and my father and my brother and my son were privileged to go on religious retreat with the Vallone and that group. And Charlie, I'm looking forward to this year's retreat. And when I started here, Paul was in college, and to think of what this family has suffered and everyone who knew him by extension, it's such a fitting thing that we do today to name this facility to Paul, who is such a really great guy. And I know him more from, I mean, I served with him for 10 months when I won that special election, but I've known him for 30 years. I know him much more through retreat than I do here, and so, you know, to really have an opportunity to get to know him like I did was, you know, and the enrichment that he brought to me as a person and everything that he will always mean to the city and now with his name on this, you know, great edifice that would be, that protects animals, like what a more fitting thing. So, I love the Vallone family and Judge Vallone and Anna Marie and everybody, so great to see you here, and God bless.
Seeing no one else on the roster, a report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Economic Development, Intro 4A, Cruise Terminals.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, preconsidered M29 and Resolution 258 and preconsidered M30 and Resolution 259, Council Budget.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Health, Introduction 1B, Paul Vallone Center.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intro 17B, Electric Vehicle Equipment.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU13 and Resolution 260 and LU14 and Reso 261, Timbale Terrace.
Coupled on general orders.
LU21 and Reso 262 through LU23 and Reso 264, Landmarks Designations.
Coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered LU29 and Reso 265, School Facility.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, M22 and Reso 266, Appointment of Amy E. Millard, Conflicts of Interest Board.
Coupled on general orders.
M23 and Reso 267, Appointment of Milton L. Williams, Conflicts of Interest Board.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intro 172, Four-Hire Vehicle Drivers.
Coupled on general orders.
General Order Calendar, LU11 and Reso 268 and LU12 and Reso 269, 230 Kent Avenue rezoning.
Coupled on general orders, I now ask that the Clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Palladino.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye on all.
Botcher.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I want to thank and congratulate Councilmember Aviles for her leadership on the cruise ship emissions bill, not just for her community, but for our community on the west side of Manhattan, which also has a cruise ship terminal. This is an example of government responding to the needs of residents and responding to changing conditions out in the world, much as like we're responding to lithium-ion batteries, public policy catching up with things that are happening out in the world. This is public policy catching up with something that's been going on for a long time, the fact that one cruise ship docked per day can admit as much as 34,000 diesel trucks. That's been going on for a long time. So, today, I'm so proud of the City Council and my colleague, Councilmember Aviles, and all the cosponsors and all the City Council staff who contributed to this. I vote aye.
Brennan.
With love to the Vallone family, I vote aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Caban.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge and send a lot of love and solidarity to the Vallone family. You know, y'all, your entire family is an institution in Astoria, Queens, that I have the privilege of representing, and so, just thank you again for being a part of our communities. And this is a great honor, and I'm really proud to vote aye, and aye on the rest of the calendar as well. And congrats to my sister Alexa Aviles on passing her bill. Thank you.
Carr.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just want to say a couple of brief words in memory of our former colleague, Paul Vallone. I want to extend my condolences to the entire Vallone family and my congratulations on the passage of this well-deserved honor. My tenure as a member only overlapped with Paul's for about a month, but I know from being Chief of Staff to my predecessor, Steve Matteo, that he was a treasured colleague to Steve and to all the colleagues that he served with during his eight-year tenure here, and became a treasured colleague to those of us who are serving now through his role at the Department of Veteran Services, and he will be sorely missed, and I couldn't be prouder to be voting yes on this piece of legislation to name this center in his honor. Thank you, and with that said, I vote aye on all.
De La Rosa. Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Feliz.
Aye on all.
Gennaro.
I vote aye, and I wish to be associated with your remarks of Councilmember Botcher about Intro 4, the bill by Councilmember Aviles is truly historic, and it's really going to be great for New York City. Bills just don't get bigger than this. This is really a big deal, and I should have asked to explain my vote, sorry, but I just got carried away. It's a great bill, and I think I voted already, right? I voted aye? Okay, I vote aye. I vote aye.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. For the third time, okay.
What was that? Gutierrez.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
I vote aye.
Holden.
I vote aye on all.
Hudson.
Aye on all.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Sending much love to the Vallone family. I vote aye on all.
Lee.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Aye on all, and I just wanted to say to Anna Marie, Leah, Katina, and Charlie, we loved your father. He will be dearly missed and was a mentor to many of us, including myself, and his memory will live on, and I just wanted to say we love you. We miss Paul, and we know that he lives on through your family and the love that you guys have and show for everyone in the community, so thank you. Oh, did I vote? Aye on all, sorry.
Thank you. Lewis.
Much love to the Vallone family. I vote aye on all.
Marmarato.
Aye on all.
Marte.
Aye on all.
Mealy.
May I explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Want to give much love to the Vallone family. I served with him before, and what befitting to have a name over the animals that he always loved and his beautiful smile. That's one thing you can always count on, his smile. Good or bad, we look at each other and have votes, but after, we always spoke, we always had fun, and he always had that beautiful smile. So, I thank you for sharing him with this city and your father, your grand, his father, all the Vallones family. We love you, and we wish you all the best, and I vote aye on all. Thank you. Thank you.
Menon.
Aye on all.
Moya. Narcisse.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the Vallone Center and love to the Vallone family. Aviles, I got you. Thank you so much. I vote aye.
Nurse.
I vote aye on all. Congratulations, Councilmember Aviles.
Ose.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Powers.
With lots of love to the Vallones. I know Paul's smiling down on us. I vote aye.
Wrestler.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Even when you disagreed with Paul, he was never disagreeable. I never heard a person say a negative thing about him. He's just a profoundly decent man, and may his memory inspire us all and be a legacy for us to follow. This is a beautiful tribute today to his memory, and I'm proud to vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Riley.
Aye on all.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Salaam.
I vote aye on all.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Sanchez.
With love to the Vallone family, I vote aye on all.
Schulman.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
It's very rare that a piece of legislation is a labor of love, voting on making the new ACC facility planned for Queens after Paul Vallone is a labor of love, and with that, I vote aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung.
Sending much love to the Vallone family. I vote aye on all.
Vernikov.
Aye on all.
Williams.
Adding my love as well to the Vallone family. As a Queens girl, I proudly vote aye on all.
Juan.
Madam President, may the excuse to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. A lot has been said about Paul. I never really like to talk about how long I know somebody because it makes me feel old, and the last couple of weeks, I was thinking about how long I knew him, and I came to work here 30 years ago this year when I was three, as you know. Talked about that before. But we really came close during the Speaker's '98 race, Paul, Peter Perry, and they're all incredible, each in their own ways, but Paul was a giant in thought. He had a giant heart. He was somebody who can be counted on to do what's right for this body, which he loved, and for the city, for his neighborhoods that he represented with great love. He got there on a second time, on a second try, and this city was much better served because he was here. He really could have done anything. He didn't have to be in public service. I think he had to because he was a Vallone, and that's just kind of the way it is, but he really didn't have to. He was just so smart and so beloved and could have really done anything, but he gave his entire life to the city. Really, he did, as every Vallone has done. And I vote aye proudly on Intro 1. Did not think that Intro 1 of this session would have that name on it, Madam Speaker. I vote aye on all with the exception of M29, M30, and Resolutions 258 and 259. Thank you.
I vote aye.
Borelli.
Aye on all.
Farias.
I'd like to also be associated with Speaker Adams and my colleagues' remarks about Paul. He was actually the previous Chair of the Committee on Economic Development and was always super helpful and loving and open and wonderful, and literally, I probably called him too much, but a call away anytime I needed advice on how to tackle our really big committee. And he was always genuinely happy to see my growth and to be supportive and want to do more all the time, so I didn't think I was going to get that emotional up here, but he is going to be greatly missed, and I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
You know, I wasn't going to go off script, but this is a moment in time that I don't think we're going to have again to commemorate this giant of the City Council. Anna Marie, he inspired me, and I'm looking at all of the text messages that Paul has sent to me over the past, I mean, I can go back and back and back, and some of the most recent ones from the day that I was re-elected for this, my final term in office, on the 7th of November, and he says, "So very proud, boss. Sending congratulations and love your way always." And then on same month, Thanksgiving Day, the 23rd, happiest of Thanksgivings to you and your family. On this day of giving thanks, we all give thanks for you and your courage, your spirit, faith, and love of your family and your leadership. Love from the Vallone family. And then on December 28th, good morning, boss. I'm sure you're enjoying this precious week of family time. That was Christmas week. I would love to be a part of your section to support your reelection as Speaker. And then, one of the last texts was the last time they stood here on January 3rd, and we spoke about the picture of he and I. He sent that picture to me. So very proud to be there with you today and every day, boss. That's who Paul was to me. I wasn't his boss. He was mine, because I learned so much from him as a steward of this council. And my super colleague, Speaker One, who I consider another father figure for me, who tells me whenever I check on him, "Baby, just sing something for me, anything." Vallone, you're very special. We are so honored, and I am so honored to close this vote today by voting aye on all, particularly with a jubilant yet heavy heart, that our beloved Paul will stand forever through the work that he did and the precious animals that he loved. Thank you, Councilmember Schulman, for your dedication and your push to make sure that this got done the right way. Thank you, colleagues. I vote aye on all.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of M29 and 30 with accompanying resos, which was adopted by a vote of 47 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions. Introduction and reading of bills.
I got to pull it back together again, don't I? All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We will now move into the discussion of resolutions. Would anyone like to speak on any of our resolutions? And would anyone like to speak on any of our resolutions? Seeing none, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolution. If you wish to vote against or abstain from today's resolution, please notify Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolution into the record. Pre-considered Resolution Two O Two calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign legislation to increase the wages and improve the working conditions of home care aides to support these workers and ensure essential growth of New York's vital home care workforce. With all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Riley, followed by Marte, then Lee.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Good afternoon, colleagues. I am proud to be introducing Resolution Two Fifty-One. This resolution will empower the New York State Education Department to support the New York City Parks Department's need for more lifeguards. The Department of Parks and Recreation maintains and operates ninety-one pools, including seventy-nine outdoor swimming pools and twelve indoor swimming pools dispersed across facilities throughout the five boroughs. In two thousand and twenty-three, the Parks Department hires six hundred and fifty lifeguards to monitor beaches and public pools. That was short of the fourteen hundred lifeguards and department had on staff before the pandemic and the hundreds fewer than the nine hundred employed in the summer of two thousand and twenty-two. The increasing shortage of lifeguards have led to closed beaches and pools during a time where we need to be invested in our city's vibrance. I had the pleasure of joining the YMCA's Legislative Breakfast at this past year's Somo's Conference and discuss the partnerships related to the improvement in swim safety, swim access, and drowning preventions. A solution that was raised and often is calls on city agencies to empower our community partners equipped to carry out work that extends beyond department limits. The lifeguard crisis is an issue that extends beyond the Department of Parks and Recreation and significantly our need, significantly indicates our needs to bolster this workforce with motivated cohort equipped to boost low staffing numbers and improve our current human capital lifeguard index as soon as possible. By enabling the New York State Education Department to allow physical education credit for high school seniors who have their lifeguard certification in New York City ages seventeen and up, this bill will work to resolve current and future shortages by encouraging students to pursue this opportunity. In addition to the resolution I'm introducing today, I am grateful to Legislative Document Division for their work to align bill reintroduction for the new session. I urge my colleagues to sign on to Reso Two Fifty-One to help end our lifeguard crisis in addition to the bills I have reintroduced today. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Marte, followed by Lee, and then Sanchez.
I'm excited to reintroduce the amended version of the No More Twenty-Four Act today. Since its introduction in an eight-hour hearing in two thousand and twenty-two, this bill has gained massive momentum and support. Intro Six One Five addresses the concerns brought up in the hearing while meeting the urgent plea of thousands of immigrant women of color who are demanding an end to the twenty-four-hour workday. Patients needing twenty-four-hour care deserve split shifts like those that exist in every other city in New York State. Eight-hours, twelve-hour shifts are the norm in places where the workforce is majority white, but here in New York City, our Dominican, Chinese, Haitian, Puerto Rican, and many other immigrant women are forced to work in humane conditions that rob them of their wages, of health, of their time with their families, of their ability to sleep at night. Twenty-four-hour shifts only happen here in New York City, so it's our responsibility to protect the thousands of home attendants subjected to these conditions. If we truly are a council that champions workers' rights, immigrant rights, women's rights, then our course of action is clear. We must end this egregious practice of twenty-four-hour shifts, and I look forward to working with all my colleagues to pass the No More Twenty-Four Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Lee, followed by Sanchez, and then Brewer.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader, and colleagues. Over the past few years, our city has been hit huge by an increase in vehicle thefts. Kia and Hyundai designed and sold car models, so if you guys have a Kia or Hyundai, pay attention, sold car models without a basic safety feature. Those weaknesses were publicized on social media and exploited to a devastating effect. And during a three-year period, thefts of these car models soared nationwide by a thousand percent despite a decreasing trend in other major crimes being measured. And I've personally heard the fears and concerns residents from officers in my district about this concerning uptick and the need for enhanced safety measures to protect vehicle owners, particularly in transit deserts like Eastern Queens where so many community members rely on cars to get around. We must ensure that the infrastructure is in place to protect their methods of getting to work and school to keep our city moving. To that end, I'm proud to introduce Intro Six Ten, which would establish a vehicle theft prevention program in the NYPD. The department would be tasked with distributing and assisting with the installation of steering wheel locks and software updates and conducting public outreach and education. Kia and Hyundai are facing considerable lawsuits and have recently started public efforts to help secure these flawed products, and it's my hope that this legislation will prod them into more robust cooperation and coordination with our city so that we can prevent further damage. And no joke, I don't know how many of you guys remember the club, where you, you know, extend the thing on the steering wheel with the locking key? Apparently, that's like the best way now to prevent your cars from being stolen, so we got to go back to that. So one of the best ways, one of the best ways, apparently. So with that, thank you, and hope to get all of your sign on.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd now like to recognize Councilmembers Sanchez, followed by Brewer, followed up by Councilmember Krishnan.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'm pleased to introduce Intro Six Fifty-Two today, which aims to establish and operate a pilot program that would offer mental health services at no cost to families when children have experienced emergency removals. Communities have long voiced concerns about ACS's practices, noting an unequal level of scrutiny particularly impacting Black and Latino families who disproportionately face these separations. This issue was highlighted in a recently filed federal class action lawsuit underscoring the detrimental effects of emergency removals on children, with Black children accounting for fifty-one percent and Latinx children accounting for thirty-eight percent of removals despite their much lower representation in the population. The majority of investigation for these removals are concentrated in specific communities like Williams Bridge, Baychester, Soundview Parkchester, Hollis, East New York, and others. While this pilot program won't address the root causes of the problems in our child welfare system, it does address an urgent need for mental health supports. Thank you so much to Councilmembers Stevens, Menon, Osay, Gutierrez, Lee, Joseph, Hudson, Nurse, and the public advocate for introducing Six Fifty-Two with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Brewer, followed by Krishnan, and finally, Gennaro.
Thank you. I do want to, didn't say earlier, I think Amy Millard will be a great Conflicts of Interest Board member, and also I want to thank the staff because they did a lot of work on getting all these reintroduced bills on the agenda. I do want to mention Kathy Goldman. She died yesterday at ninety-three. She was a leading advocate on food and hunger issues. In nineteen seventy-one, she created the first summer meals program, and a year later, the first school breakfast program in the city of New York. She was the leading advocate on that and also for improving lunch in schools, still an ongoing issue. She started the Community Food Resource Center, which has morphed and is now a multimillion-dollar organization. She started the Community Kitchen in Harlem, which also has a new kitchen and is very much a go-to place for people who need food. And she was the first person in the city to talk about food insecurity. And I want to mention the work that she's done. She was honored recently and did receive a White House Champion of Change in the past, and we will miss her very much, but her legacy lives on. Thank you very much. Kathy Goldman, rest in peace.
Thank you. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Krishnan, followed by Gennaro.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. Today, I am proud to introduce legislation, Intro Six Oh Seven, Six Oh Eight, and Six Oh Nine, the Back Home Act. This, as we all know, the housing crisis is the most urgent crisis we face in this city, and if we are to solve it, one of the most effective ways to do so is to protect tenants and to protect their homes, to keep people in their homes. But we see all over the city landlords deliberately destroying buildings to vacate tenants from their homes, remove buildings from rent stabilization and turn them into market-rate luxury buildings, or after large fires, prolonging or delaying repairs to keep tenants out of their homes. Intro Six Oh Seven, Six Oh Eight, and Six Oh Nine will address this issue by doing a few different things, creating a comprehensive system to get tenants back home as quickly as possible when they're vacated, to make sure that when they're vacated, they are relocated in their own communities, not halfway across the city or other parts of the borough, far from their schools, far from their, their original home. That when they're vacated, the city works with them to get back in as quickly as possible to get their belongings, because they're vacated often on short notice overnight with no notice whatsoever. We've seen this as a housing lawyer and tenants that I've represented, vacated from their homes, a large fire in Jackson Heights on Eighty-Ninth Street before. Tenants are often out in these situations for months, but really years. This legislation will also require HPD to initiate legal action against the landlord if the landlord refuses to do the repairs to bring tenants home. And finally, when a vacate order is lifted and tenants are able to return home, the Back Home Act requires that landlords notify tenants of their right to move back in and reoccupy their homes and are given the ability to do so rather than apartments being re-rented to other people at much higher rents. This is an essential way we have solved our housing crisis. I want to thank my cosponsors who have joined us on this legislation, council members, Aviles, Wrestler, Brewer, Gutierrez, Schulman, Osay, and Rivera. And again, if we are to solve this housing crisis, we must take seriously the issue of protecting tenants and their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Gennaro, followed by Nurse.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm standing again, so look out. I, I, I think this is as good a time as any to let members who may not know what, what, like what this body and what the city owes to Peter Vallone Senior. Once upon a time, the council used to have kind of like an older brother, so to speak, called the Board of Estimate. Has anyone ever heard of the Board of Estimate?
Yes.
Well, you know, the Board of Estimate was composed of the mayor, the comptroller, and the, what was then called the City Council President and the bar presidents. Bar presidents had one vote, or the citywides had, 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 had two votes, and they controlled, the Board of Estimate did, the city budget, land use, contracts, franchises, water rates. There was, and, and, you know, no one knows this better than Gail. And, and, and this was, this was, and, and Peter Senior believed that that body was unconstitutional because you had the, the bar president of Brooklyn having the same voting strength as the, as the bar president of Staten Island. They made a federal case of it, went all the way to the Supreme Court in March of nineteen eighty-nine. The way the city governs itself was struck down as unconstitutional by a nine-to-zero vote, which created the, the New York City Charter Revision Committee. We had to admit the new way to govern ourselves, and during that process, the council went from thirty-five seats to fifty-one to make it more inclusive of racial, ethnic, and language minorities, and all the powers, just about all of them, that were on the Board of Estimate, we got. And so this is something that, you know, Peter Vallone, you know, did for the city, and he became the first speaker. Up until then, the legislative leader was known as the vice chairman. I don't know why they called him vice chairman, but this is what it was. And one of the most endearing things about Peter Vallone Senior is the only, he's the only person on earth who still calls me kid, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gennaro. I'd now like to call on Councilmember Nurse.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm reintroducing the Stop Illegal Evictions Act, Intro Six Two One, Six Two Two, Six Three Two, and Reso Two Four Six, which will create stronger penalties and disincentives to finally end illegal evictions in New York City. My district is one of the top five districts hardest hit by illegal lockouts and evictions, and I've seen them in action. I've personally been to eviction blockades and stood by as tenants had...